Harding, Johnson, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Thanks. Everybody, please be seated. I just wanted to, April is something that we don't always talk about a lot. It's Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month. And I wasn't aware until I looked it up. Every six minutes, somebody in the United States is diagnosed with Parkinson's Disease. It's close to my family. My uncle was diagnosed with Parkinson's Disease many years ago, and it really has impacted his life and his family's life. And so, to raise some awareness, you can go to hashtag #TakesSixForPD. Take six minutes to raise awareness for Parkinson's Disease. Second, though, I was reminded when I walked in, or I guess I wasn't aware when I walked in, today is actually the United States Holocaust Remembrance Day. So, today is a day that has been set aside by Hebrews to remember the Holocaust. And I think as we have students here that we're going to welcome in a little bit, the best way to not repeat history is to learn our history. So, thank you all for being students and taking the time to learn so that we never repeat some of the horrific mistakes that were made in our historical past. So, maybe take some time today to just read up and remember, remember all of those who were sacrificed in the Holocaust. So, and I won't, lastly, I'm not even going to talk about it being Tax Day, but if you didn't remember, make sure that you get your extension.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here today and look forward to hearing from you on our many items. I would encourage you to turn your cell phones off, or at least to vibrate. And before we get started, I do want to recognize a group that's here with us today, and I had a pleasure of speaking with them just before the meeting, Val McPherson and also the Young Southeast Asian Leadership Institute. We appreciate having you here. Welcome to Omaha and appreciate your interest in local government. Madam Clerk.
Item six, to consider a Class C liquor license for Muchachos located at 1258 South 13th Street. Is communication from the Planning Department regarding permits for the outdoor area.
Public hearing and vote on number six is today. Proponents, please. We have a proponent by Zoom. Nick, we'll get you off mute here in a second. Okay, try that.
Oops, sorry. First time.
There you go.
Hi, yeah.
Want to give your name and address?
Yeah, this is Nick Mastis with Muchachos, 1258 South 13th.
All right, and you're just here to answer questions, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. A reminder, this is subject to permits, too. All right, there's a motion in a second. No further lights, roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item seven, to consider a Class I liquor license for the Backline Comedy Theater located at 1618 Harney Street.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please. Come on down. Yeah. Then just keep your name and address for the record there.
Right up here.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Dylan Rhodey. I live at 2732 South 10th Street. I'm the owner of the Backline Comedy Theater, and I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi, how are you today?
Great.
You want to give us a bird's eye view of your establishment, what you're going to be doing there? I'm very much interested in participating, so help me out and draw me a picture in terms of what that looks like.
Sure. We've been at this location for about almost 10 years now. We are a comedy theater and training center, so we teach comedy and do improv and stand-up and sketch. We've had a beer-only license for about the last nine and a half years, and, or nine or 10, and then we were, we're getting some upgrades, so we're hoping to go to more like wine and liquor as well.
So, about how many people do you expect to serve daily on average?
Sure. We'll be open for shows four nights a week, and I would say, we have about two to three shows a night, so I would say 300, 350, somewhere around there a week.
Wow.
A week, sorry, not a day, a week.
Okay, 300 a week?
Yeah.
Okay. I was getting excited about that.
Yeah.
Well, good. Sounds like it's very good, and obviously, you're going to be in a location that's going to be popping real soon here. Certainly, yeah, thank you. Certainly, I'm very impressed by your opportunity here and what you're going to bring to Omaha as a whole. I move that we approve this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion in a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thanks, thank you.
Item eight, to consider a Class I liquor license for the Brunch Box located at 1308 Jackson Street, Suite 1.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Goodrich, and the Brunch Box is located at 1308 Jackson Street.
Just here to answer questions, right?
I'm here to answer any questions, yeah.
All right, good. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Stephanie, how are you today?
Hi, I'm good, thank you. How are you?
Tell us what the Brunch Box is, what are you going to be doing in the old market? Glad to have you down there.
Yeah, so it's a new startup. The concept is to serve brunch food at non-brunch time, so we'll have lunch and dinner options. Most of the time, it's mornings, we'll be in the evening. But the more specific use of our liquor license is for alcoholic froyo, so it's frozen yogurt infused with alcohol, in addition to frozen yogurt that's regular without alcohol.
Okay.
But we'll have a small beer and wine section inside.
Okay. I'll look forward to getting down there and wish you the best of luck, and I'll make a motion to support and approve this, Mr. President. Thanks for being here today.
Motion in a second. No further lights, roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item nine, to consider a Class I liquor license for Frank's Pizzeria located at 1170 Capitol Avenue.
Public hearing and vote on number nine is today. Proponents, please. I believe we have the, oh, go ahead. Yeah.
Hello, my name is Matt Halligan. I live at 16173 Capitol Ave. I own Frank's Pizzeria. We are opening our third location over at the Capitol District, 1170 Capitol Ave. I'm here to answer any questions you guys might have.
Great.
I tried to bring pizza, too, but I don't, the cops got a lunch break, so they stopped me.
Free sample is always welcome. Are there any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Matt, I'm really excited about this opportunity of bringing pizza in the downtown area, and I'm really excited about your enthusiasm as it relates to providing good customer service. Looking forward to your store opening and wish you nothing but the best of luck.
Thank you very much. We're also very excited. As the guy that's been down there getting the place ready for the last two weeks, oh, man, let's make it happen.
Looking forward to that pizza.
Oh, yeah.
I move to approve.
Location at 132nd Dodge.
Never. About to celebrate 20 years. It'll be 20 years this September.
All right, we have a motion in a second. No further lights, roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good luck.
Item 10, to consider a Class I liquor license for Omaha Sports Academy located at 21015 Cumberland Drive.
Public hearing and vote on number 10 is today. Proponents, please. We have a proponent by Zoom, Mr. Peterson. Give that a try.
Right. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, Zachary Peterson, proponent for 402 Jam, doing business Omaha Sports Academy. Address 9500 West Dodge Road is my current address.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. Motion approved in a second. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 11, to consider a special designated liquor license application for the Broke Down Palace located at 8805 Maple Street for an outdoor beer garden concert on May 11 through 13 from 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM with music until midnight each night.
Public hearing and vote on number 11 is today. Proponents, please.
Yeah, Ross Coley, 8805 Maple Street. Just want to thank all the council people for their service. Appreciate that. And I'm just here to answer questions today.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. This is in my district, and I'm supportive of this application. I know, Ross, I still owe you a show. We haven't quite been together.
I sent you an email today on my way here, actually. We tried last year, but we'll make it happen one of these days.
In full confession, I have a show this weekend in Councilman Bailey's district, but I'll get back to Benson soon.
Well, you know, we're all trying to get a piece of him, aren't we? Good luck. Break a leg, by the way, and maybe I'll turn out for that one, so.
Thanks, and thanks for the good job you do with this location as well. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
I'll make the motion to approve, but it's always good to see it every year because you know who your doppelganger is, and.
Oh, yeah. We talked about him last time.
Yeah, we did last year.
Yeah, I got a little haircut since the last time I was in here. Make mom happy every once in a while, so.
Move to approve.
Yeah, thank you.
Motion in a second, roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you very much. We'll see you soon, I hope.
Sounds good.
Item 12, a resolution to approve the final plat for Harris Edition located northwest of North Post Road and 40th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 12 is today. Proponents, please.
My name is Dan Rock, 9290 West Dodge Road on behalf of the proponents.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. Motion in a second, roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 13, a resolution to approve the Leavenworth Lofts Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 3612 Leavenworth Street in an amount up to $1,013,496.
Public hearing and vote on number 13 is today. Proponents, please.
Yeah, good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. This project is on a vacant lot on Leavenworth adjacent to the large Conrad apartment project. This is new construction of a four-story apartment building with 24 units. It's three levels of, three levels of apartments on top of one level of structured parking. Be 19 parking stalls. About half of the 24 units will be short-term rentals, VRBO rentals. Developers 3612 Leavenworth LLC, managed by Charlie Sullivan. This project is about a $7.6 million project. They're requesting $908,000 in TIF support. Project complies with our TIF program criteria. It's appropriate land use for the area. We ask for your approval.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Thank you, Mr. President. Council members, good afternoon. Robert Griffith, here on behalf of the applicant, 11440 West End Road. Charlie Sullivan, the developer, is also here as well. Happy to answer any questions you might have. And thanks again to Don for presenting, as always.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number 13? Seeing none any opponents.
Larry Store, 515 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha. 68132. I'm not the only opponent to TIF financing. The Reader Magazine had quite an article called "The TIF With TIF." I won't read all of that, but I do want to read this out of one of the state tax books that TIF was enacted in 1979 under Nebraska's Community Development Law to provide public funds for private development of blighted areas and communities throughout the state. Finance the bonds to pay for the public costs of the projects, or finance by higher future property tax revenue. Problem is, we never say whose property tax. Do we really want to believe that the developer will own that property and only he will pay for it through higher property taxes for that property? I don't think so. It involves the people that live in the area, the businesses that are in the area, will be facing higher property taxes to pay for it. But we never hear that said in these halls. I'll give that to you, too. But in this article in the Reader Magazine, Volume 28, DC9, in November of '21, even Aaron Fecting was against it. And I won't read much out of this other than to say that one of her comments was, "You don't see a lot of TIF development in North Omaha, do we?" Well, the reason is, the property values there are pretty low. And the idea is for a developer to get property tax assessments at the current level or blighted level. So, if you can't find it in North Omaha, you blight it somewhere else, and then developer gets that lower value. But the people that live in the area that will be, have higher taxes for it, don't. So, I think you need a better, full discussion of TIF financing for the citizens to be able to comprehend it better. Or a flat-out denial of this whole article and in the state tax book. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents on number 13 today? Seeing none, public hearing's closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Charlie, you don't have to get up, but I appreciate, again, the outreach you did. Seems like eons ago, but we sat down several times, and I know you met with neighbors and did all the things and beyond what at least I ask people to do when they're doing projects in my district. Now, this one right next to the Conrad, I think it'll fit in well there, and it's, it's going to be good for, to complement everything in that area. So, I appreciate your reaching out again, and I'll look forward to supporting this here today, Mr. President. Thank you.
Do you want to make that motion? All second. No further lights, roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 14, a resolution to approve a major amendment to the special use permit to allow daycare services in the R-535 district located at 4102 and 4110 South 13th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 14 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Ralph Gladback, Architect, GP Architecture, 1708 Child Road East, Bellevue. I'm a representative for the owner. I'm here to answer any questions anybody may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. Motion in a second, roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 15, a resolution to approve a major amendment to the special use permit to allow major utility facilities in the DR District with a waiver to Section 55-108 Height to allow a 62-foot tall structure located northeast of 120th and Fort Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Please communication in opposition.
Public hearing and vote on number 15 is today. Proponents, please.
Joe Gay, 430 West Road, Portsmouth, New Hampshire, on behalf of MUD, here to answer any questions you may have.
And I am Denise Dolazol. I am the Director of Gas Production of Metropolitan Utilities District, and I work and oversee this facility where this improvement is occurring.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael McCandless, 11756 Heimball Circle, and I oppose this construction idea. Should I continue? I've discussed it with several neighbors. There's been a significant amount of construction in that area over the last year. We've had a huge construction project from OPPD and MUD. I will tell you that during the COVID year, there was a Zoom meeting where my wife and I attended, given by OPPD, where we were promised a lot of things. A lot of what they said did not come true. The construction is ongoing, it's continuous. We have had to deal with construction noise on a Sunday morning at 7:00 AM. It is continuous also with MUD, which we did not receive a notice for, but on the other side of that, that construction is continuing as well. The problem is, it was an open area created by MUD years ago and became sort of a natural habitat for the wildlife in the area. What's happened since is that that wildlife has found its way into the neighborhoods. The other concern is, other than the noise and the wildlife having nowhere else to go, is just the impact on our property values. So, I'm raising concerns on behalf of my neighbors, and certainly, we'd like to discuss this before it goes any further. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearing's closed. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Wondering if representatives, if you could come up, because, by the way, I've never been contacted on this project either. If you could, maybe, give the people that live in the area a little more information. What does it look like? What's the construction time? And we, I understand, I was on that Zoom call, too, so I'm not going to hold things OPPD said against something that you're doing, but I think you can understand, maybe, the neighbor's hesitancy when.
Sure.
The utility company, it's more of a, kind of that utility company, because you're right, I was on that Zoom call as well.
The, I think the opponent may be confusing and conflating the OPPD project, which is occurring on the northeast corner.
Right.
Of our property and the project that MUD is doing.
So, could, maybe you could give us a little more information on your project, what you're doing, what it looks like and the impact on the neighbors.
Okay. The MUD liquefied natural gas plant has existed there since 1974. It is of the age and reliability. Now that equipment breaks down, we can't get parts, it's time to replace all of that equipment. We're doing very little construction as far as buildings or disturbing ground, but we are replacing all of the major equipment, all the processing equipment that will make liquefied natural gas and then enable us to warm that liquid natural gas back up and send it out into the distribution system when weather conditions are very cold. So, that's our mission. Store gas for the lean times and put gas back out into the system. As I mentioned before, we've been there about 50 years and had very little objections to what we do in that area. This, we have had some construction on the MUD property, supporting the vaporization side of the business. That's not visible to anybody that lives anywhere around there. It's up on a pretty hidden hill.
Right.
This construction that's under permit today has not begun. In fact, we have not even started taking down the old equipment yet. That will be soon, but it has not started yet.
So, and so I think what the, I think what you're asking is, what exactly are you doing? And so, I think what you said is, you're just, you're replacing the old equipment with new equipment.
Correct.
So, there really isn't going to be any, any difference to us, but you're going to have new equipment, so you'll be able to provide the gas.
That's correct. And it'll be newer, more efficient, less expensive to run equipment compared to what we have now. So, it's just replacing a compressor with a new compressor, a vaporizer with a new vaporizer.
And I think that just wasn't clear on our agenda what the project actually was. Did you have anything to add?
No, the, I guess the only thing I have to add is, the structure we're putting in is actually going to be slightly shorter than the one that's coming out, so.
That's, and that's kind of what I was looking for. What is the impact to the people around, which is, I think, what the neighbors were wanting. So, it sounds like this is going to be better than the current facility.
It will be considerably better. And as Joe mentioned, the, the existing cold box is there and has been there for 50 years. The new cold box, which is the 62-foot tower, is shorter, is going in a very similar spot. It will be no more visible to anybody around the facility than the existing one is now, which I don't think you can see it from Ramble Ridge or any of the other neighborhoods, really.
Okay, hold on, hold on. All right. Do you, do you have anything else to add, other than you're replacing old equipment with new equipment, and this is actually going to be shorter?
Correct. I have nothing else to add.
Okay. Is there any landscaping that's going to go up around it?
Currently, no. There's, there's no plans for any additional landscaping. I know we, during the last project we permitted, we met with the, I forget what the department was called, but urban planning, I believe, and essentially, there was no requirements for additional landscaping on the property.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And, sir, I'll allow you some time if you wanted any rebuttal time for that.
Yes, not really rebuttal, just a clarification. I wasn't confusing those. I'm just.
Hold on, you have to, you can only talk to us.
Okay. The very little construction bothers me. There's quite a lot of construction, both with MUD and with OPPD. The fact that, you know, the statement was, "It's not visible." I live right on the western edge of Ramble Ridge Drive, and it is visible. What I think myself and my neighbors would like to know is, how involved is this project? Is there any projection as to how long it will take? We just simply don't have enough information, you know?
Well, and what, what I think is, and I think, Ms. Dolazol, I mean, could you exchange information so that the neighbors have a contact at MUD that they could call? You do have an elected official, but if you could maybe provide your contact so that, and maybe even have a brief meeting or a Zoom meeting or something with the neighbors that you could at least go through the construction time, what to expect, and the roads. And, because I don't think that's something that we dictate here at the city council, but I think it'd be great if the two of you could connect and have a contact. Would that be okay?
Agreed, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Motion approved, but I think there's a light on.
Motion, motion approved in a second. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Denise, if you want to come back up, or, sorry, let me get who you're with. You just have to say your name and address again.
I'm Denise Dolazol. I reside at 14512 South 23rd Street in Bellevue, but I work at the LNG facility at 120th and Fort.
And I think I'm following along, and I think the question was answered, which really helps us, because when we hear of something, we worry about what was there before. So, it's a permit for a structure 62-foot tall, but tell me what is coming out of that area and how tall was that?
Yeah, the existing cold box was 66 feet tall.
Okay.
So, just a few more feet, but the same footprint.
And looking at the map that we have here of the, the project area, do you know the distance from this plant to? know the distance from this plant to the nearest residential home? Because it looks like there's quite a bit of a, a buffer with something in there. Do you know that distance?
That, we can measure that out for you probably, but the, the buffer between the plant and all of the surrounding properties is prescribed in both federal law under FEMSA Part one ninety-three and A S T M and A S M E standards for liquefied natural gas plant construction. So all of that area, including the O P P D area, was part of the, the original buffer zone for the plant. And that will not change. We will never sell that property.
Okay. No, that makes sense. You've, you've been there for a very long time. Obviously, you have to have this buffer area to the residential area that's nearest to you, so that's my questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe?
I just had one question. I think Michael brought this up, but what is the construct, construction timeframe going to be? What's your anticipated completion time?
Yep, the estimated completion is around May of next year, so May of twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley?
Thanks, Mr. President. If you, sir, if you, if you want to reach, maybe you guys can email me. I'll hook you up with somebody at the Omaha Public Power District, talk more about Standing Bear, get you direct communication, if you haven't had that, because that's important. I know, being an employee at O P P D, that's something they really look to do. So if it got missed with you, if you wouldn't mind sharing my email address, I'll be glad to hook you up with somebody at O P P D to help you. Thanks for coming down. Thanks.
Sure.
Thank you. Some motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe. Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Consent.
I gave him my business card.
Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Members removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearing on Agenda Items sixteen through twenty-eight were held on April fourth. Don't see any further lights. Is there a motion? Motion in a second. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe. Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Public hearings on Agenda Items numbers twenty-nine through sixty-one are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the Agenda Item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent, I will note for council members that we have the applicants for number thirty and thirty-two by Zoom if needed. And I'll now open the floor to any comments on twenty-nine through sixty-one. Seeing none. Public hearings are closed. Motion in a second to approve. I would just simply note that there's over five million dollars' worth of residential street resurfacing contracts in, in this portion of our agenda that I think is very welcome and badly needed throughout all of our districts I know. So I look forward to supporting that. No further lights. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe. Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item sixty-two, in ordinance, levying a special tax on assessment for sidewalks group SWR twenty-twenty-two-dash-zero-one is amendment of the whole requested by the Public Works Department.
The vote on number sixty-two is today. I will note the amendment of the whole. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe. Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item sixty-three, in ordinance, levying a special tax assessment for litter removal group twenty-twenty-three-dash-zero-four is amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
The vote on number sixty-three is today, also with an amendment of the whole. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe. Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item sixty-four, in ordinance, levying a special tax assessment for weeds group twenty-twenty-three dash zero-five is amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
The vote on number sixty-four is today, also with an amendment of the whole. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe. Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item sixty-five, a resolution to approve the nomination of Vivian Strong Street as a commemorative street name on Twenty-first Street from Clark Street to Paul Street.
The public hearing and vote on number sixty-five is today. Proponents, please. We'll have Mr. Love, and I think we have Carol Larry by Zoom also.
Yes, in fact, I, I really stand to ask a favor. There's several out, quite a few talking with the media. If we could-
Ah, okay.
-work out a sequence, maybe. They're coming now, so.
Good timing.
Yeah. I could song and dance until they get seated.
You're good at singing and dancing, I know that.
But I know no songs and cannot dance. So I will go ahead and do that.
Okay. And then just your name and address.
My name is Preston Love Junior, P R E S T O N L O V E. I live at sixty-twenty-one Villa DeSante. I come in support for this street naming. I, my comments are brief, but I just want to say that the history of North Omaha is filled with good, the bad, and the ugly. Quite frankly, the story of Vivian Strong is in the latter, but we surely welcome the idea of memorializing her. Vivian Strong needs to be remembered. Vivian Strong was a tragedy, and quite frankly, on the dark side of our history. Vivian Strong was our and is our family. Some of her family, blood-wise, are here, but we all were Vivian Strong's family. Her sister, if you will. She never had a chance, Vivian Strong, fourteen years old, when she lost her life, to quite frankly sit where you're sitting as City Council people, or maybe to be the mayor or the vice president of the United States. Vivian Strong didn't have that chance. And so I say, we uniquely have the chance to speak on her behalf. While we cannot reconcile her death, we surely can recognize her death. We can memorialize her. Vivian Strong is part of who we all are, who live in North Omaha now. We want her to be memorialized. We want her to be remembered. And I would also say, as a personal note, that Vivian Strong's tragedy was in nineteen sixty-nine. It was way before George Floyd. We've been losing African-Americans for these number of years and continue to do it even today. I would hope that everyone would support this, among other things, and maybe down the road, to reconcile this death of this wonderful young lady. Thank you so much.
Thank you for providing that background. We appreciate it. Are there other proponents that want to speak today? Any family members? Mr. Thompson?
Franklin Thompson, ten-twenty-five Beverly Drive. It's good to see you again. I stand as a new but important friend of the family. I'm also representing the Omaha Community Council on Racial Justice and Reconciliation. That was the group, if you remember, that brought the historic markers for Will Brown and for George Smith, and this is a continuation of that work. In addition to that, we are co-sponsoring it together, the family and O C C R J, but we're also getting much help from Councilmember Juanita Johnson, and we're getting help from the N double A C P, from the Great Plains Black History Museum, and from an adjunct group of activists in North Omaha. So this is a collaboration. It's not just one entity, but several entities that have come together. And personally, even if I were not on the O C C R J committee, I only lived five blocks from the event, and I remember quite vividly what took place. And Vivian was only six months younger than me, and then a couple of years under me were in terms of, we were all Tech High family. And the residual effect, people usually talk about the economic residual effect on Twenty-fourth Street, but it was far more than that. And people on the inside, like myself, can, can tell you about that effect, one of them being the effect on a whole school called Tech High School. It is Omaha's best-kept secret, the effect that that death had on that school. And that school did not go back to regular race relations until the seventy-six, seventy-seven school year. It took that much, it took us that much out of normal operations. And, and then in addition to that, we, we also had a lot of what we call white flight that left, and then that impacted the economic base of North Omaha. So the residual effect was both for the original family, family members who definitely had to suffer. They didn't get a whole lot of help, and they didn't get a whole lot of sympathy or, or, or follow-up. So definitely, that, that was the number-one tragedy. But the economic tragedy in North Omaha followed. A whole lot of students who would have probably gone on to be lawyers and doctors and whatever, became angry, angry radicals. And I've seen so many of that group get a little sidetracked, and now in their fifties and sixties, they're, they're bouncing back now. But the story of the Vivian Strong murder has a far wider reach than the average Ameri, the average Omaha understands. I stand in support with the family, but also as a, one of the historians in town, I also know that it's important, like Mr. Love said, for, for healing. And, and I understand that sometimes it's uncomfortable for certain people or certain sides of town to have to relive these things. But until that healing comes, then you will always have this boiling and turning and churning. And, and if we truly, truly are going to be into race relations and human relations, we've got to go back and heal these things so that we can move on. I appreciate not only voting yes on this, but on the, on the sixteenth, if you could show up to the street naming, I'd appreciate that. And then the committee with the family, we're also planning a July twenty-eighth historical marker ceremony, of which the Nebraska Historical Society has agreed to, to fully pay for that. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for providing that history and those personal reflections. Other proponents, please. Uh, however you'd like.
Oh, come on. Sherman Wells, forty-seven eighteen Kansas Avenue.
Duranda Strong, fifty-four thirty South one hundred and fourteenth Street.
Ladonna Strong, one-five-one-three North Twentieth Street.
So Vivian Strong's father, James, and my grandfather, Joe, was brothers. First, I wanted to say thank you to Juanita for all the help and guidance through this process. Amy, Don, appreciate, you know, the communications. We just really want to make sure that the city recognizes and honors Vivian's life, and like Dr. Franklin said, the effects on North Omaha it had. And in order to move past it, we do need this healing. It's just long overdue. We're extremely happy to be at this point, but it's, it's bittersweet, you know, to be, you know, from nineteen sixty-nine still to this day, to have the same devaluation of human life, black human life, still be unaccounted for as far as justice for that. So we just here today as a family to hopefully that you guys approve the street renaming, and also, like I said, like he said, join in and be in there at the street renaming. You know y'all all are welcome.
I just want to say thank you all for this time and this, thank you all for this time and this opportunity. I think everyone has said everything, and in conclusion, I just want to say it's history. I wasn't here, my mom and Vivian are first cousins, so it's something that my family has brought me up on. It's not in our history books, it's not knowledge. So starting this way, we can get not only our family, but the community more knowledge and information and awareness on Vivian Strong and the impact it had in Omaha, North Omaha community. And not only is there doing revitalization in that area, which I appreciate, and thanks, Juanita, I still live in that area, and the street naming that we're thinking about is right by our homes, so we would really appreciate it. We thank you for the time. And once again, please join us.
I would like to thank you as well. I am Vivian Strong's cousin. My mom and her were first cousins as well. And we just appreciate you guys for just taking the time out to hear our thoughts and, you know, how we feel about the situation, and we appreciate you all, and thank you.
Thank you. And I want to thank you for being here and for initiating this, and also for inviting us to the ceremony. You're welcome. July twenty eighth?
Yeah, there's two dates. So the street renaming cer, ceremony is June sixteenth, and the historical marker is July twenty eighth. Yes.
Oh, Fridays.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, I'll send you guys out an email once we, you know, I got everybody's email. Yeah, I do.
Good. We look forward to it.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Any other proponents in the audience that want to speak?
Good afternoon. Tamika Mees, Executive Director of North Omaha Community Partnership, address is forty-eight fifteen North one hundred and forty-eighth Circle. Everyone pretty much summed up why this is important to the North Omaha community. It's sad, and, you know, such a tragedy as it was, it is still a part of our history. Those that were living at that time, you know, it, it caused a lot of trauma in our community, which, you know, because of that trauma, you know, it incited, you know, things that were unfortunate, unfortunate events that occurred in our North Omaha community as a result. And providing this is a form of healing. It provides healing, it provides acknowledgement of the event that occurred. Something like this cannot be swept under the rug, no matter how much you don't want to talk about it or suppress it, it's there. I was not living at that time, but I know about it because my parents and grandparents told me about it. So there's a lot of pain in that, and I just think, again, with acknowledging that and giving honor to this young, innocent woman whose life was lost, it just provides healing and a step forward in the right direction for our city.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other proponents in the audience? Seeing none, we have Carol Larry by Zoom. We'll get you off mute here in a minute. I think we're getting closer here. I think she's, she's downloading from the west coast, I believe. All right.
Hi, I'm Carol Larry. I'm the applicant. Vivian Strong was my sister. I was thirteen at the time, she was fourteen. I, I would really, I'm, I'm sorry, my address is three-seventeen Teal Ridge Hills Drive, Henderson, Nevada. I, I'm just asking for approval. It's been fifty, almost fifty-four years. We're coming up on fifty-four years on June twenty-fourth, and it's something that I'll never for- We're coming up on 54 years on June 24th, and it's something that I'll never forget, but I've seen the community grow. I come back every year, at least once a year, and I've seen the community develop. As Ladonna, my cousin, said, she lives nearby, brand-new homes. My sister-in-law lives nearby. I've seen a lot of growth and improvement in that area, and, which makes us happy, because the community has never been the same since her death, and so I'm just asking for your approval, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol, and thanks for participating by Zoom today.
Thank you.
Are there any opponents today? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I would like to thank everyone for coming and coming up to the microphone to share their thoughts and ideas as to the significance of this street renaming, more importantly, in North Omaha. Preston, I would like to thank you for drawing that history, bringing us the historical significance about this event that happened in North Omaha, and the fact that you drew reference point to the good, bad, and ugly, that this marker is an indicator of us going forward into the future. Dr. Thompson, I would like to recognize your comments regarding how we collectively made this event happen. We worked together. You mentioned a number of organizations, a number of people, and I won't go into all of those because you've already done that, but you did indicate that it took all of us to bring this to this event today. I also would like to say, as Johnny Rogers oftentimes say, he oftentimes says, "It takes, oh, teamwork makes the dream work." I want to point that out because that's very important, because no man is an island. It takes a team to get anything accomplished. For the family, hey, your comments regarding long overdue, it's been over 50 years, but the day is here. It's significant, and as the day is ahead on this June 16th, as well as July 28th, we will finally kind of put this to rest. And again, I'd like to thank you for coming up and sharing your thoughts and ideas. Tamika, I would like to talk a little bit about what you reflected on as far as this tragedy. Yes, this was a humongous tragedy for North Omaha, for our community, and yes, this will signify a symbol of healing, again, looking for tomorrow, and hopefully, we can put this all to rest, all to bed. And then, lastly, Carol, I would like you to thank you for submitting the application and your humble remarks requesting that we, as city council, that we adopt this or submit, be in agreement, that this street name, street renaming is something that we all agree that needs to happen and will happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
I motion to approve this.
I'll second. No further lights. Roll call.
Begley, Harding, Johnson.
Yes.
Melton. Plarmo.
Yes.
Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you all for being here.
Item 66, in ordinance, to approve the Second Amendment to the HSA Bank Services Agreement.
Public hearing on number 66 is today. Proponents, please.
Kristin Cavill, City Benefits Manager, here to answer any questions you have.
Deb Sanders, City Human Resources, here to answer any questions.
Any other proponents on number 66? Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item 67, in ordinance, to approve an agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of the Midlands in the amount of $50,000, and to authorize funding from the City of Omaha's fiscal year 2022 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant.
Public hearing on number 67 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item 68, in ordinance, to approve the 5902 North Ninth Street Industrial Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on number 68 is today. Proponents, please.
Afternoon, Don Seaton, City Planning, and I'm here for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Non-action items, item 69 through 111, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future. After the item on the agenda, as well as the date, the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Second. Roll call.
Begley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Plarmo, Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 2:55.